Okay, it hasn't queued you into a phone break yet. We're ready when you guys are ready.
Okay, this is 6:02, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please, Mr. Davis?
Mrs. Eichel.
Here.
Dr. Hooker.
Here.
Mrs. Johnston.
Roll call, Elizabeth. Can you hear?
Yeah.
They're doing a roll call, they need your vote.
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis. Aye. Mrs. Singh.
Aye.
All here.
Aye, aye, aye.
You're hearing.
Well, Mrs. Singh, you need to vote that through now.
Yeah, I did need to. I do that all the time. Try to dial in that number again, please.
Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So good.
Is there a second?
Second. Go ahead.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Lewis. Aye. Dr. Hooker.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnston. She say aye, correct.
They need your vote on the roll call now, Elizabeth. On the agenda adoption. Yep.
Mrs. Singh.
Aye.
Mrs. Eichel.
Aye.
Can I have a motion to go into executive session in accordance with Ohio Public Health Code 121.22 to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employer official and Ohio Public Health Code 121.22 G5, matters required to be kept confidential by federal law, rules, or state statutes.
So good.
Second, second. Roll call, please.
Dr. Hooker.
Aye.
Mrs. Singh.
Aye.
Mrs. Johnston.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mrs. Eichel.
Dr. Hooker, any costume?
Well, yeah, so the reason I'm wearing this is because I really think that we should consider having it for our faculty here and staff too, you know, cleaning our contract employees. This is, just adds one more level, the protection is not an exception for a mask, a mask needs to be worn, but this just gives you one more thing. I wear it at work, I wear it for 12 hours taking care of patients, it doesn't button me at all. I thought it would, I thought it would drive me absolutely crazy, but it's just one more additional level of protection for our employees. So, they're about four bucks apiece, you really need only one. If you lose it, or drop it, or destroy it, you need to replace it, but I've been using the same one for four months and it's still in perfect condition.
How do you clean it?
You need to have some sort of virus saddle spray, you spray it on both sides and just wipe it off with a paper towel. And you should clean it, we are supposed to clean it after every patient, but you should clean it, you know, once a day, I think would be reasonable in this non-medical environment. So anyway, I think that the teachers want them, I would, we're highly, she's going, yes, yes, I would really like to see us order these for the teachers to add one more level of protection for our amazing teachers.
Okay, so first on the agenda is the first reading of the 2020-2021 school year calendar change. Mr. Konecki.
Yes, so thank you again to Amy Campa and our IAGPO leadership who are here tonight, Mark and Nick, and Dr. Stewart is here as well as Jim Nichols. We've had our team working on the proposed calendar changes. You have a look here of how the adjusted calendar that was proposed would function under either a Plan A or Plan B, just so that you can see those dates, remembering that under Plan B, there would be two teams of students that might have different start and end dates, so that's why there's two looks there for you. Melissa or Amy, did you want to say anything about the calendar that's in front of them? I think it's pretty straightforward.
Can I, can you just, you may have just explained it, but I didn't understand it. What is the difference between A and B?
Calendar A, we're in school five days a week, in person, the whole group, anybody who reports. And calendar B would be the hybrid or blended model with less population and two teams.
Okay.
And those teams would be either red or white, and they would have a different start day and end day, for example, in the school year calendar, because they're not always in school at the same time.
So if you were to switch in the middle of the quarter from A to B or B to A, what does that do to the calendar?
The day, the only issue would be in, on the B calendar, there is a staff work day on September 25th, and the reason for that day is simply to even out the number of red student attendance days versus white student attendance days. And if we were in Plan A at that time, I'm not sure that that day would be necessary. That would be the only issue. The rest of the days are all lined up, so if we happen to have to transition from A to B, there would be students already assigned to come on that day, families would just have to know what team they were on before the plan was implemented.
Thank you.
Okay, the only thing that I was confused about, and I didn't actually count all things up, so it's probably clear I just don't get it, is on Plan B, it seems like a lot or most of the green staff development days fall on the days when the white team is supposed to be in school, so how, is that a two, we're talking about how to even sound?
Yes, because most of our holidays are on Mondays, so those of that, the red team.
Okay, so that's the balance.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Okay, wonderful.
So this is just the first reading?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, since this is the first reading, there's no vote tonight. I have the feeling that we'll be back together soon, and we could put on this very quickly. So if you do have further questions, along, I'll be sure to address those to Mr. Konecki or to Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for working on that.
And I think maybe it was, could you just explain to the many viewers what we're doing, what's happening, where we're shifting for a week? I'm not sure that, if they were here last time, they may know it, but it may not be now.
Oh. Yeah, okay, so the reason for the proposed calendar change is that with everything that's happening and all the planning and changes and PPE and all the safety things that need to be taken care of before we can start school, we just felt it was really asking way too much of our administration, our staff, and our teachers to get ready to come back and be teaching on August 20th. And so this shifts everything one more week later, so that all the ducks can be in a row as much as we can control, and it just gives, I think, peace of mind, and that was feedback from, from Mrs. Campa through some of the teachers and pretty much everyone, I think, just feels everybody's under so much stress anyway, that if we can give you just at least a week to have your space, and you're gonna have to redo your rooms and, you know, and the online learning, and so there's just so much that has to be done, and, you know, we'd like to give you a month, but we can't. So at least a week is hopefully helpful, and I hope that you understand that we did this for your best interest, and so that we're really ready for the students when they come back.
And the other reason, thing that if anybody has this question, is the teachers are still reporting when their contract has been reporting, they're not getting any time off, they're gonna be working very, very hard, and I will also note that our teachers have been working all summer long, even on their, you know, when they're not supposed to be working, Amy, you're not supposed to be here tonight, you're supposed to be up. And I really do appreciate the hard work, it's ongoing, and I think this will let us really solidify to be ready.
We will provide these on our website in draft form, so people can see them tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to move into dialogue regarding the reopening plan for 2020-2021 school year. And, you know, it's been just a ton of work, so we have some things to talk about, but first, I really would like to start with Mrs. Campa, she has a statement from the IAGPO, and I think it's important that we start with that and we hear what our teachers have to say.
Thank you. Board members, administration, and community members of Indian Hill Schools, the position of the IAGPO is simple. We insist upon safeguarding the health and safety of students, faculty, staff, and the community while continuing the programs and opportunities that make Indian Hill a special place for students. We founded the IAGPO in the spirit of collaboration and with the mission of forging strong relationships. We are fortunate to enjoy great relationships in our district with our students, our parents and community, and with the board and our administrators. Thank you again for allowing us to be a part of this conversation. No group of people wants to be back in the classroom teaching kids more than teachers. The connections and relationships we have with our students and families are the very reason we do our jobs. We want to be with our students and interact with their families, but the challenges of COVID-19 have not made that easy. When considering a return to school plan, there are concerns that we would like to address. Community health. It is vital that we create a culture of understanding that personal choices affect the health of the community. Our organization advocates for a masked policy that is enforced, a community that encourages families to keep students home when sick, a working environment that encourages faculty and staff to stay home without fear that an absence will negatively affect their position. Decisions regarding a move to blended or online learning should include evidence from the Hamilton County Board of Health or the Ohio COVID-19 Risk Level Guidelines, so that it is predictive for families. Social and emotional health. The benefits of a return to school for the social and emotional health of our students has been stated. However, a return to school is not a return to normal. The new realities of a school environment in the midst of a pandemic will bring with it its own set of fears, anxieties, and other emotions that can get in the way of learning. We promote a focus on assisting school professionals and helping students and colleagues maintain the increased stresses of this new environment. Time and flexibility to create great instruction. A return to school in any scenario will necessitate a seismic shift in the way we conduct our craft. We need time and flexibility to ensure we are prepared to deliver great instruction and to be responsive to the needs and interests of our students. We understand that there are no easy solutions, and no one solution will be best for everyone. As an organization, we are grateful that teachers have been included in the creation of the plans being considered, and we value the thorough investigation of all the possibilities. Once a plan has been chosen, there is still much work to be done, and the sooner we have a plan in place, the sooner we can get started on that work. Thank you again for allowing us to be a part of the conversation. Respectfully, the Indian Hill Educators Professional Organization.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Campa.
Thank you.
And thank you for providing that to us, I had the time to read, awesome, thank you.
Okay.
So now it's time to have some dialogue, but I do want to start with, you know, it's always good to have whatever information we've gotten since the last time we met, which wasn't very long ago. And Amy, could you talk about what you told us about Hamilton County today and your conversation with them?
So there's been a lot of discussion about what Hamilton County Health Department had issued about what to do when a child is exposed, or excuse me, a child is sick and then people are exposed. And it's a great organization, Hamilton County Health Department, and they've taken a lot of time and a lot of feedback from their first drafts, and the new draft will be coming out very shortly. I don't want to quote it because I don't have it, okay, but in general, the gist was that instead of a thoughtless policy of if anybody has a cough, you send everybody in that room home without any thought at all, it will be a more of a thoughtful process with the use of our nurses here that can say, I doubt this kid has COVID. I'm still sending them home, but I'm not sending everybody else in the classroom home, so that we'll be able to make more intelligent decisions about what's going on in our school, and we will always, 100% of the time, here at Indian Hill, have the students' safety and wealth, or safety and health, and that is the first thing, okay? So if we think there's a risk, we will be sending lots of kids home, okay, so don't mistake that. But I really was very happy, I think their policy is scientifically based and has taken a lot of input from a lot of, what do you want to call it, stakeholders. So I look forward to that, and it was said that it will probably be to Mr. Konecki tonight, so hopefully that will be getting to us soon. But I think that does make me feel a lot better, that we're gonna have an intelligent response to potentially positive cases in our school district.
If I might add one thing that most of you probably heard today, is that fortunately for Hamilton County, Governor Dewine announced today that we are no longer on the watch list to go to purple. The statistics that I pulled today that were effective as of, in their determination, because of course we didn't move yet, but the reason why we're no longer on the watch list is because a number of factors are not as close to the edge. So that's a great thing, and I think it tells us that people that have been wearing masks have been cutting down on this, and I have hope, given that, that maybe if we continue to, as a community, continue to wear masks and practice social distancing, that we might be in orange or yellow. So I was very encouraged by that news today, obviously, every day is a new day, and everything can change, but I was absolutely encouraged by that news today, and I just wanted to share it.
Yeah, that's great news, and thanks for sharing that, because I know a lot of people probably didn't get a chance to watch that today, so that's great. So I think it's, it's time to have a little kind of roundtable discussion, and maybe just like I like to do, go around and find out what each board member is thinking, since we have had a lot to, we had a lot to absorb the other night, we've had a lot to absorb since, we've had a lot of community input, so I don't know, if Elizabeth maybe could maybe go first?
You know, there's so much information coming out every single day, and it's all common rule, because no one can agree on any one opinion, and our interest is to get everybody back to school in the most normalized condition possible. It's gonna be difficult, because if they're wearing masks, they're just gonna remember normal about that. And I think the primary consideration is, I would have to make was to realize that the situation could change every day. We have to provide a great opportunity for our students to get flexible more in their home as the situation changes, and we have to respectfully listen to our staff, because they are front-based with the children, they understand the children and their needs, and I think collectively we will come to a good decision.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnston. Mrs. Singh.
Can you do your line, just so we...
So I think all three plans are great plans, in my opinion, and it depends which plan we can implement when, depending on the situation we are in. I just hope that, you know, everyone who's watching or who's part of this, is just being a little bit more flexible and patient with the administrative team and with the teachers, and just trust them that they have your kids' best interest. And all of us who are sitting in here, for all of us, your kids' safety, teachers' safety, their family's safety is always has been a priority, and that's the reason why we all are here going over these plans. I feel very confident about, I think as a community, if we all do our job, I feel confident that we will be able to get our students back safe and be able to provide them the best education that Indian Hill is known to provide.
Thank you. Mrs. Lewis.
I obviously echo the other board members' comments, and Mrs. Campa, thank you for presenting. We very much appreciate the input of the IAGPO, and we have gotten a lot of information since Monday and on Monday, and we appreciate everybody's comments and responses, and I, the most important, not the most important, there are so many important things, we have to be flexible, and we've heard that from the IAGPO, we've heard that from our administrators. In COVID world, we're gonna have to be flexible and nimble, and things change on a daily basis. And so I also support all of the plans that were carefully crafted by our administrators and teachers, and trust that what you presented to us is, number one, you know, the best that you think that we can do in order to protect the children in the specific environments. And in addition to that, it's important that we can be flexible by and between plans, and from what I heard from the administration and the teachers, is that we are very flexible, that if we happen to be in Plan A on one day and had to move to Plan C, or if we happen to be in Plan B and we had to move to Plan A, if we had a predictable system, that you would be able to do that in a nimble fashion. And I think that that is critical to approving three plans whereby, you know, we can give direction to the administration on when we should be in those three plans, and whether we should use as a guiding post something that's predictable, you know, like the Ohio Public Health Advisory System, and use that as we go in between plans. But I'm thankful for everything all of you have done in putting those plans together, and so that's my opinion.
Thank you. Dr. Hooker?
So I think, you know, the one thing to reemphasize is that every member of the board has had the interest, the safety and the health of all of the students, staff, and administrators. It's been our first, our most important thing that we care about, every one of us cares tremendously about it, that. We've had some debates about the science around different things, but I feel much more comfortable than I did a week or two ago. I think that we have a, you know, we strongly believe in a strict mask policy, and anything short of that, you shouldn't adopt any of these plans other than C. So, and I think that we have, we're gonna talk about the system, I think, you know, the Ohio, I can never remember the name of it.
Public Health Advisory System.
The Ohio Public Health Advisory System, though not perfect, is a system that can be easily followed, you know where you are, and then you can react to it. If you look at the spread of COVID-19 in areas around the world with education systems open, if you have a lower incidence in the community, your risk is very, very low. If the community is, like I like to say, on fire with COVID, I don't think you want to let your kid leave your home. So I think this public health advisory system with all of its warts, I like to say, is as good as we got today, and it's available, and it probably is a good way to help us guide which one of the A, B, or C plans we use. But it does require absolute use of a masking system. I do really strongly believe, and I think other board members do too, that if we are with a low community incidence and a low community risk, that we can bring every one of the kids back to school five days a week, and that's what we would all love. But if people will wear their masks, this is my little advertisement from Public Health, guys, girls, everybody in the community, if you want to see all of the schools in Hamilton County reopen, please wear a mask 100% of the time, wherever you are, and you are doing a favor to try to open schools. If you don't care about the school's opening, don't wear a mask, do whatever you want, and that you're gonna have COVID spread through the community. So it's every single citizen in Hamilton County can help us beat COVID and open the schools.
Okay, so and where I am is, you know, first of all, I know that we can open our doors and educate our children, and we do it better than anybody in the world practically, on a good day, but we have this overlay of COVID, and so our challenge is, of course, to figure out how to do what we already do well, but do it with unbelievable safety measures and unbelievable concern for everybody in the building, and especially the children, but equally our administrators, our staff, our teachers. Everybody is a valuable asset, and we don't want anybody in an unsafe situation. So what I love about all three plans is that given what's going on in the community, we have a great plan for every single scenario, and I trust every one of these plans. So, and I love the idea of following the Public Health Advisor, because it's predictable, and it's not perfect, and it's not totally clear, but what it is, is something that we can all, we're all gonna be hearing the same thing, we're gonna all know where our county is, what color we are, and if we then know what plan goes with what colors, or at least what plan will be discussed for which color, depending on what's going on, I think that just gives everybody a sense of security, it gives the parents and families an opportunity to plan and not have curveballs thrown, because we'll watch the trends in the data, so I really like that. And then I think where I, where I am with this whole, how we move forward is, our staff has done such an incredible job formulating these plans, I think we feel really confident about the plans, and so now, as board members, we can pass some resolutions, we can make sure that we have a strict mask policy, which will be presented in a very near future for us to vote on, once we, once that language is all finalized and we come to some kind of agreement on that. But I think once, we're at the point where we can start taking some action, but more importantly, we're at the point where, as board members, we can get back to the 10,000-foot level where we belong, and get out of the weeds, so that you all can actually do what you do best, and get ready to open these doors in August, praying that we got, you know, yellow or orange. So that's kind of where I am. So I guess if there are any more things to discuss about any of the plans, or any questions that anyone has, otherwise we can start to move forward on procedure.
I just have a comment, Eichel, I just want to thank Board of Education, I think that the due diligence on the part of all five of our board members over the last few months is commendable. I know how much time personally and professionally you've spent doing your homework and looking into not only the science and the medicine, but talking to administrators and staff and community members, and listening, and trying to really dialogue thoroughly about all these things. Taking this time is really valuable, and we really appreciate it.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? So if we're going to use the Ohio Public Health Advisory System, is there a timeline for when we would announce which plan we would be starting school in, like, do we have a, like, what would be the date that that's decided upon, or...
So my...
No, go ahead.
I mean, I think it would, for example, if we adopt all three plans, I don't think we have a resolution tonight to say if we're in yellow and orange, we would be, for example, in Plan A, and, you know, where I'm leaning is if we were in red, we would be in the Blended Learning Plan B, and if we were in purple, we would be in Plan, you know, C. You know, we're not voting on that tonight, we don't have a resolution on it, I think directionally, that's where I personally am. But for example, to your specific question, if that were the way it was, that we won't know until we're supposed to open school, and usually that's given, my understanding, I think it's on Tuesdays and Thursdays, it is announced what counties are in which color. So I don't know what the Tuesday or Thursday before school would be, but that would dictate how we open schools, if that's the direction of where we would go to our next resolution. But we're not resolving that tonight, but I think directionally, that's what we would want to do.
Yeah, I would second, I would second that, that, you know, that's really what we're thinking, is that that would be basically what she just said. We can't vote on it tonight because we didn't notice it, okay, so, but that, but I would make the decision as close to the time school's supposed to open, you know, and again, we are ready to switch from A to B to C to, you know, whatever we need to do, and we just, unfortunately, in the interest of trying to get the best thing we can, we have to make that decision at the last second, which is hard for you all as teachers, and as I said... And as I said in a previous meeting, I think you have to be ready the first day to go in A, B or C. Because it's, and it's unfortunate, I'm having to do the same thing as you here and it's a lot of extra work. It's a lot of extra work. So.
So I guess, you know, we would look to you really also for realistically, how much time are you going to need? Because I do think even though, you know, we could be, um, orange one day and then the next announcement, we could be red, I think we would be seeing trends. You know, just like we heard today, we're, we're off that watch list and we're trending down. And you can, you know, on the COVID site, there's daily updates of, so you, you know, I can already see it. So I was already, I kept hearing that we were going to go purple and I think it doesn't make sense because we've been trending down since the last week of, um, of June, actually, in many things. So I didn't understand that. So now when he said today that we're off the watch list, like, oh, that makes more sense. So I think that we'll have trends, but I guess you all need to talk amongst yourselves and let us know what is reasonable and realistic as far as making changes. And I also think, you know, another thing that will impact changes isn't just what's happening in the county, but what's happening in our schools. You know, if all of a sudden we have a lot of positive tests, then you all need to come to us and say, you know, I think we need to go to, you know, from A to B or B to C based on what's happening in the school. So that's another part that will inform this. Um, so it's really, I personally want to give you all as much control as we can because you're on the ground. You know, you're ground zero of this and you're seeing it and you know it's, what's happening. I think the guidelines of, um, you know, working with the colors just helps everyone be on the same page and understand what's coming. So we would love to hear from you, what you think.
I, I, I think that that's a great plan. Um, I, I just think that teachers will need a reasonable amount of time and, and what that is at this point, I don't, I can't say. I just think that they'll need some time to, um, make that transition, whether it's a day or a week. If it's Tuesday, we're switched and then the next Tuesday, we're going to, Tuesday, the announcement is made by the Ohio Health Board and we're moving the next Tuesday. That, I don't know if that would be too long. I, I hadn't thought that that, I hadn't thought that for yet, but I, I think that that does warrant some conversation. Yes. Thank you.
I would just add to it maybe is that, you know, regardless of which plan we are, we have online. Like either if we are doing Plan A, we still are providing online with schools. So we have that plan set up.
Yes.
If we are on B, we still have the online. If we are on C, we still have. So basically with any of the plans, we have two things going side by side.
Correct.
So I think if teachers are ready with, you know, online and in class, I think that would kind of help you guys move forward quickly. So maybe till, you know, if, I guess till the schools are open or till we know for sure that, you know, what situation we will be in August. Because it's hard to say that we will be in August. If we are in red, then I can see that, you know, we would be somewhere maybe in blended learning or, you know, depending on what both sides to go with. I would just tell teachers that, you know, they should be preparing for both, all three scenarios. Oh, I should say both, two scenarios.
I think to Kim's point, the alignment to, um, a color-coded Ohio Health Advisory Alert System is going to provide clarity. And because of what you said, Nancy, the lead time and the trend data is about a week. Trailing data that we can always look at, we will be able to talk with the team about how many days will it take us to communicate a shift and make sure that people have time to digest that and get prepared.
I think that would be really important to bring to the August meeting.
Yeah.
When we decide, you know, I mean, if we approve all three plans tonight and then in August, we're going to decide kind of how do we go between plans and what's going to dictate moving between plans. I think, you know, I'd love to hear from, you know, the collective team, the administrators and teachers. You know, how do you want us to do that? How is it, how can you do that where it's best for our students and for our teachers to be able to move between one and the other one?
Can I ask a question from a teacher's standpoint? We talked about it when we looked at the plans. Uh, how are we going planning? I think I know the answer, but I'd like to hear it and let everybody hear it. How are you going to deal with the fact we have 10% that said they're not coming? And they have the right to do that and I support that right 100%, you know. So we got 10% that said, I don't care whether you're in A or B, I'm online. Okay? Are we planning to have an online teacher that teaches just online and at all grade levels? Um, and can you just kind of talk to that? Cause I think that's a big question that parents have. And obviously everybody would need to be able to switch to online if we're at C, but.
My understanding is that that is the case, but I, Dr. Stewart, would you like to answer that question?
If you're going to break up?
My understanding is yes, we will have a teacher that will only be teaching online. And then it would be the responsibility of, um, a teacher like me, who I will be in the classroom, to provide, if we are in Plan B, those online lessons for my students. Um, and then if we were to go remote to Plan C, then I would also continue to teach my class, my group of students in all three models.
And I think, Dr. Stewart, maybe just a, a little bit of a high level overview of the team that's been helping you to kind of help stand up online behind the scenes. I know we have gotten some questions. Could you just give an overview of what's going on so the people have an idea of who's going to be leading some of this and where we're headed?
Right. So we started to work with some professionals who had a great deal of knowledge about the best way to provide education to our students who would be online. We specifically worked with professionals at the University of Colorado and the University of Cincinnati. That actually started back in April, um, when we started to try to, to just be better teachers online. Since then, we have been working also internally as a staff to develop our own knowledge of teaching online. And we are working to actually design that curriculum now. You'll notice when you sometimes look at other school systems and the decisions they've made, they refer to what they call a third-party vendor. And they are saying you can choose to come with us face-to-face or you can go online. And if you do online, it will be with a third party. What that means, it is a program that they have purchased that has some artificial intelligence to it and that provides the instruction, the practice and the assessment for the students. We did review those programs and we chose to not do that as a school district because we felt like none of those programs matched the quality of education that our teachers provide face-to-face. So it was a huge decision to do this, but that's when we decided to say, we need to look at at least one teacher per grade level that would then be responsible for teaching our students online. So the type of quality that we're used to receiving face-to-face, we want to make sure that students have that same quality when they're online. It'll look slightly different because it is different if you're doing that via Zoom versus being in the classroom, but it's the idea of that same quality and the importance of having the teacher provide the instruction and the practice and the assessment with students, not a program, the teacher.
Uh, just one other thing. Uh, is there a plan at the high school level to try to do some synchronous stuff with the kids that are at home so that they are engaged? I, I know that's not going to work at the elementary, or at least I don't think it would. Uh, but at the high school, if you've got a chemistry professor or chemistry teacher, excuse me, that's teaching chemistry, if all the kids that are supposed to join, join by Zoom that are home, if we're in Plan B, I'm talking about Plan B, and is there, is that, I assume we have the technology and maybe some teachers are planning on using that?
At the high school, we want every single student that's online to have chances to have collaborative experiences with their peers who are here face-to-face and to interact with the teachers that are here face-to-face. So there will be some activities that the students will do and they will do them 100% online. But we're going to have online liaisons. They're our teachers. And their job is to make sure that those students also have access to our teachers here and that they have some collaborative experiences. Again, part of the high-quality education that our students receive here is having peer-to-peer interaction. Now, I think that what Mrs. Campos said at the beginning in the letter is really important. A return to Plan A does not mean a return to what it's looked like before. We're going to have to think outside of the box and think strategically about what collaboration looks like for our students when we're three or six feet apart and we all have on masks. It's going to be a new world. But we still need to stay committed to the idea that our students learn when they can learn together and they can learn with each other. The same thing goes online. So we will make sure that those students have collaborative experiences. In some cases, that will be actually zooming into the classroom. In some cases, we might have actually a whole class of students that are in the same course and then instead of zooming into the classroom, they'll be zooming in together. Um, that could certainly be true with a course like biology where all ninth grade students are taking exactly the same course. And if we have enough students, that would actually be their own section.
That's great. Thank you. I just think it's important to people to know this is not a correspondence class.
It is not.
You know, this is not some half-baked idea. You all are professionals. You are doing it at a high level. I just think people need to understand.
The only other thing I would add that, Dr. Hooker, I appreciate that so much, is that at the high school level, the design of what it looks like for each high school student who's online will be very individualized. And it all is based on what course that they're taking. So there will be some times that a student wants to take a course and we want to say yes to every course that they want to take. And the only way that we can do that sometimes is to have them log in and be part of that class when that class is face-to-face. There will be other times that there'll be enough of a cohort that we can then run a different class. So it'll be very individualized per student at the high school.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I just wanted to ask you, so in the high school, students who are, um, online, they're not watching the video and learning from what's happening in the class. It's a completely different class for them.
It all depends on how many students are in that class and what that class is. There will be times that we can find programs that will help the students to gain that knowledge that they need. And then if that's the case, we'll have some programs. But in high school, it's a little different because you're talking about seven potential teachers. So if we, um, at the, um, second grade level where Mrs. Campos teaches, we can say, okay, one second grade teacher is going to teach all those subjects and all of those students who are online. At the high school, um, we have one computer science teacher right now. And if we ask him to teach all of the students who are online, we're not going to have anybody left to teach who is face-to-face. So it's very individualized based on it. But our goal is to not say, is to say yes to any class a student wants to take and to figure out how we can make that happen.
So are you all going to, um, start asking kids to sign up for the classes or?
Students have already signed up for those classes. And so now that we're at the point of getting closer to understanding the way that we can respond to the health needs by having a Plan A, B and C. And when we get to that point, then we're going to be able to better know. Um, I think that another point is that we've received several, I have received several emails from families who've said, "Thank you so much for the information. This has been so helpful." And by the way, we love live streaming board meetings. You guys should do that all the time. And so they now want to change their mind. So they said, "This is how, I thought I was going to be online, but now I'm going to be face-to-face." Or, "I was, I wanted to be online, but I felt nervous about it and now I feel less nervous. I want to do online." And so I think we're going to have to make sure that we have really accurate numbers and then we can start to contact those high school students.
High school students and local students.
Yeah, that does bring up a point, Nancy. I would like us to add the technology so that we can continue and Zoom every one of our meetings, even once COVID is long gone. I think it's the way to go. We should do both. If you want to come in person, great. If not, you Zoom on in.
Uh, yeah, I like that idea too. I think we actually discussed that, um, in the later time, whatever, I can't remember what month it was, um, after a meeting. And then all of a sudden we had no choice but to be online anyway. So, um, I, I think this is great and I think it's, um, and it's been good for our meetings. It's been good for our community to kind of see how we interact and, um, and in some ways it's, it's maybe better because they can also watch it on their own time. So I like that. Um, one question I have, um, that's kind of a comment question is, so moving forward, obviously we need to still understand from our families if they are planning on having their children stay home. And, and I know we had that one questionnaire that went out, but it sounds like maybe we might have to start over on that. I don't know.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm not sure that you can really do that until after we've had the opportunity to fully vet a mask policy and vote on it so that people know what they're working with, right? Is that your feeling or?
Nancy, I think we can tell everybody, we're planning on having an extremely strict mask policy. I, I think.
It's just a little bit being approved, but it is going to be there.
I, I think in general, to answer your question, there's a natural time before we get to August 1st where we start to know that people, um, we need to set some schedules. People are coming back into the building to do some work where we need to field these questions to parents again to get some more specific data. And we have had, um, several people contact us about, "Now that I know more, I, I'd like to make a different choice." Or, "Could I, could I make a selection now? Is it too late because I didn't fill out the questionnaire you sent?" So we are going to field out information to parents again with enough faith and ask them to give us some more data.
Okay. I just kind of wanted to give some clarity because I'm sure that people are wondering also. So, okay. So is there any more dialogue or, or are we ready, ready to move on to consider a resolution? Okay. Uh, gentleman in the back, anything you'd like to say? No? Okay. Mr. Nichols?
No, I'm, I'm just really excited that we got to work with the teachers to build three plans that, you know, put our students first and these are heavy decisions. And I think about our youngest winners, of course, from the primary school perspective and they're our babies. We, we care deeply for them. So these are hard decisions and I'm just glad we got to collaborate for it together to build some really great plans.
So next on our agenda is the consideration of a resolution regarding re-open plans. And, um, you all have it in front of you and I know that you received it ahead of time. Um, and this just basically states that, um, you know, we're endorsing the 2021 grade return to school academic plans and opt, and options for the reopening of the Indian Health Executive Village Schools and granting the superintendent authority related there too. So a lot of legalese. And, uh, so basically what we are approving or what we're, what we're, the resolution we're voting on is that to basically approve the three plans. Um, and then we would be back in another couple of weeks to ratify more details on the plans and, and guidelines on the tripwires of what creates A, B and C, correct? Everybody understand what we're running on? Um, okay. So with that, could I have a motion to approve, um, is there a resolution number, Mr. Nichols?
Uh, there is not. It would just be the, the highlighted part there at the top. It would be a resolution endorsing the 2021 grade return to school.
Okay.
I signed those numbers after, after the meeting.
Okay, great. Um, so could I have a motion to approve the resolution endorsing the 2021 grade return to school academic plans and options?
Um, I, I will make that motion. One of the things I did want to reinforce is the other thing that we would be voting on next time would be a mask policy. So we're voting on this tonight, but obviously to the extent that that would change anything, you know, we, the resolution is continuing. So I just want to get it. I think all of us have indicated we're, um, we're in favor of a mask policy, but we haven't really seen it and we have to review it and we have to ultimately go run it. So, um, so with that, as that wound, um, I will make a motion to approve, um, this, the, resolution endorsing the 2021 grade return to school academic plans and options for the reopening of the Indian Health Executive School District.
Do I have a second? I could second. Uh, can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mrs. Singh?
Aye.
Dr. Hooker?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnston?
Did you hear the resolution vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Eichols?
Aye. Okay. Wow. That feels good.
Yeah, I, I want to just clarify one point. Uh, we have been. We have been looking at the mask policy. We just haven't gotten the last word on it. So it's, we have, we are working on this a lot. It's been through many, many, what?
Iterations.
Iterations, thank you. So just be aware, but it's strict.
Just want to, again, thank the board. And I know we've kind of talked around some of these things. But in terms of next steps, we also want to let people know who are listening, we do anticipate news coming from the state of Ohio on sports, on extracurriculars, on some other operational flexibility from the state of Ohio. There's all sorts of things that we will continue to work on and bring forth in the next meeting. And we know people have questions about those things. As we get that news, we'll provide updates.
And to that end, board members, if we could make sure that Mr. Konecki has our schedules for the last week of July, the week of July 27th, which evenings? Or daytime, doesn't matter. People are flexible. It doesn't matter. When, what times we would be available to meet that week so that we can take care of some of these sports supplementals if necessary, potentially the mask policy, anything else that is, or we said. So please be sure to share your schedules. And so instead of an actual motion for adjournment, I need a motion to go back into executive session?
You got to say why.
To consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official.
Sorry.
No, thank you.
So moved.
Roll call?
Was that a second?
Second, yeah.
Dr. Hooker?
Aye.
Mrs. Singh?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnston?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mrs. Eichols?
Aye.
And so could you let Danny know to turn? Okay, we're back in open session. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Elizabeth? Thank you, everyone. Great meeting.
Thank you.
See you again soon.